All right, I want to welcome everybody to the November two thousand and twenty Planning Board Meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, I was going to introduce a new Planning Board member, Jennifer Bakker. She was appointed last week by the mayor. And she had a family issue this evening. She's not going to be attending. If she gets away from what's going on right now, she will jump in. So Marcus, just make sure if she does respond that she has the ability to get in on the conversation.
Absolutely.
Also, Eileen Abtenger, our newest member who was appointed two months ago, who attended last month's meeting. She is not going to be able to be here. She has a medical issue that prevents her from attending the meeting. So the Planning Board, we do have a quorum where we can conduct business. So as long as Jeff and Tracy stay on, we'll be okay. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October fifteenth Planning Board Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that anybody has? I have a couple. I want to let everybody else go first.
I didn't have anything, Sean.
Okay. Rosemary, on page six. And in the future, if you could, Rosemary, if you could label the pages, there's no page numerations on them.
I just got a new laptop and they were numbered, but they didn't show up.
Okay.
When I sent it, so.
So on page six, do you see, did you get to page six, Rosemary?
No, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but just tell me.
On page six, the first line reads, "The officie is needed to store dry fuel gas." That should say dry fuel casks, C-A-S-K-S.
Yeah, dry fuel.
Cask, C-A-S-K-S.
Alright, okay.
The next paragraph, the first line, it says, "Extension of a pad was completed in two thousand and six." Now, the original pad was completed in two thousand and six. Okay, it was no extension. It was the original pad.
Okay, two thousand and six.
Yeah, that's the same. It just, I want to remove expansion and say either first or original, okay? Because there was no expansion in two thousand and six. It was the original installation. This is an expansion of what the project we're talking about now. And on the one, two, three, four, five, six, on the seventh paragraph, on the fourth line or fifth line, it says, "The new site results in the smallest overall footprint for the city facility, considering the existing and expansion site and optimizers." That makes no sense to me. What it should say is, "The new site results in the smallest overall footprint." And you should delete the rest of that sentence, okay? Do you have that one? Do you understand that one?
Uh, yeah, I think the, I put that in from something else. So just delete the second sentence after that.
Well, it's a big run-on sentence. So just say, "The new site results in the smallest overall footprint." And then put a period there and get rid of everything, the rest of the sentence, okay?
Yeah.
And the second to last paragraph on the same page where it says, "Chairman Murray pointed out there is a dam in that location." What he pointed out was that there is a dam to the east of the location.
Damn.
There's no dam or water where they're working right now. I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Okay, got it.
Does anybody else have any additions or deletions that they would like or corrections? Can I have a motion to entertain the minutes as amended?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the preliminary submission for site plan amendment and building permit application for the initial site work and construction of the independent spent fuel storage installation for Entergy. So, I guess everybody has been communicating with George and David. So I'd like George and David to go over the things that have been covered since our last meeting. I know we had talked about a lot of things that we needed in order to set a public hearing. I wanted to see if the drawings and all information is supplied that is sufficient to have a public hearing. So, George or David?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Tim Cronin is the one who we've been talking to. David, I believe, is the, Dan is the other applicant.
No, I mean David Stolman because he was reviewing the, he was reviewing some permits, wasn't he? Didn't he have?
I've actually seen, I've seen one plan, which I received yesterday, and I've not seen an environmental assessment form. I'm not sure if there's been any submission in terms of seeker. Tim, I think, could tell us that. But we're looking for an environmental assessment form and some more plans, I would think. Is that about right, George?
Yes, so we had a good discussion with the applicant's engineer, Cronin Engineering, and he's laid out a plan, how to move forward with the construction of the new pad. So yes, and the details of that, there's probably some more details that need to be worked out for that, yes.
But we, correct me if I'm wrong, we did ask for EAS at the last meeting, right?
Right. I was sent a part two, which is really the Planning Board's responsibility, but I have not seen a part one yet. So there should be a full part one filled out.
Ted, is Ted Gatto on?
The part one long form was submitted last October.
Last, a year ago or this past October?
No, we submitted it with the October paperwork on October fifteenth, I believe.
That is correct. The part one long form.
I haven't seen that.
Marcus, did you get any of this paper? Did you get the part one EAS form in October?
I do not. I did not go through the paperwork. I just went by whatever. I got digital. So I got, Rosemary, Rosemary, do you get paperwork on that?
I believe that there's an EAF, but it's for the soil excavation permit. Because it's the same one.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, the same one, yes.
Okay.
Hey, is there any? We only have the EAF for the excavation permit. We don't have the full project assessment?
It would actually be for the full project. It discusses the entire project.
I'm sorry, I can't hear who's talking. I can't hear.
It was Ted and it was Sean and Rich Barone, and it was for the entire project. The form was submitted for the entire project.
George, I don't believe we've seen that, have we?
I was just reviewing the plans. I didn't go through any other documents.
Right, I've not seen the full EAF.
If you have the soil and excavation permit, that was part of it.
We submitted ten copies along with the excavation drawings and several other documents went with that, ten copies of each.
That was in October, right?
That was the October seventeenth meeting.
Who is speaking?
Ted, Ted Gatto.
Ted Gatto.
I don't see you on here, okay.
I could send you an electronic copy tomorrow morning or this evening for that matter.
What else? I know Jeff, Jeff Viall had a bunch of questions. He wanted to discuss with Entergy right now. Jeff, do you want to go over the questions that you had?
Yeah, Sean, basically, how many dry-cast stored vertical canisters that are in overpacks presently exist on the present pad?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. Okay, do you know what type of canisters they are and overpacks?
They're manufactured by Holtek International. It's called a high storm. And within the high storm is the MPC, the multiple-purpose canister. Within the multiple-purpose canister, there are thirty-two fuel assemblies.
Do you know what type of sensors are existing in that system?
None.
None, so what type of?
None by design.
None by design, okay.
They are loaded in accordance with the heat load that each cask is designed to take.
And do you do inspections on the over?
Yeah, that's correct. Once a shift, we have operators go up to the pad and verify that the ventilation system for each canister is free of debris.
All right. Now, during the inspection, do they lift or move the dry cast or they just sit in one place and that's where they sit?
That's just where they sit. It's the weight in tons.
About four hundred and fifty thousand pounds, roughly.
Yeah, each canister is about four hundred and fifty thousand pounds.
Okay, so what type of inspection is done on each casket when they go up to inspect them?
Each cask has a ventilation port on the bottom and on the top to allow for cooling, right? So when the operators go up once a shift, once a day, they verify that there's no blockage to those ventilation ports.
Okay. The next question is, during the decommissioning of the plant and the demolition is complete, is that the only structure that's going to be left there because of the old pad coming out?
No, in theory, what's left as a protected area on site is the existing Aswissi pad and the Aswissi pad expansion. There'll be a total of one hundred and twenty-five casks containing fuel on both pads, and then there'll be additional five casks that are postulated to contain greater than Class C waste, highly radioactive waste. So a total of, what was that, one? Hundred and thirty casks total.
Hundred and thirty casks. Okay, final question I have is, I brought this up the last time. Will there be any wells to monitor the groundwater?
Not at this time, no. And there are none around the existing pad as it is right now.
So would Entergy be adding that to the plan?
Negative, we will not.
Okay, that was the only other questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, the reason why we're wearing masks here is protocol at the site, and there's three of us in the room here, requires us to wear a mask, so that's why we're in our masks. But we didn't do that for any other reason.
David, I just went through the package that we got last month, and there is a part one full environmental assessment form that was supplied to us in October. And I could have sworn we went over it during the last meeting.
I don't think we did. We went over that, Sean. And I'm looking at what I was sent. I've got a letter from Rich Barone, two pages, and I've got two pages of a form, and that's all I've got, not an environmental assessment form.
We have, we were given a thirteen-page, thirteen-page, like thirteen-page one.
I can take a look at it as soon as it's sent to me, but I don't have it.
George, did you see it last month, so?
I don't recall seeing it, Sean.
No, it's very frustrating to me because, you know, we wanted to have all this paperwork taken care of. And if, David, if you knew we didn't have all the paperwork we needed, you know, you could have contacted me or could have contacted the applicant. You know, we had agreed to do everything in real time so that we have all the documentation necessary to continue to move this project forward. And I didn't ask about the part one of environmental assessment form because we had it last month. You know, so I'm just wondering where the disconnect is so we don't have it again next month. So could somebody tell me why this documentation is not being distributed properly?
Sean, if it was my fault, I'll fall on my sword, but I was waiting for materials and.
Dave, I don't want anybody to fall on anybody's sword. I want the process to be correct so that it doesn't happen again. So once you fall on your sword, who's going to be the next victim? You know what I mean? This is the thing I'm trying to leave you. You know what I mean? So where is the breakdown? Marcus, do you have any input or what?
The only thing I can say is, if there were hard copies and they were not forwarded over because with COVID, I don't know if there were any digital copies sent to Rosemary to send over or there were just hard copies and then everybody picked them up. So I don't know how the documents were forwarded over to the village. I don't know if there were, if there were just hard copies and I can see David doesn't come to the office, then, and then he should have been mailed a copy. That's the only thing I can say.
I went to the office and picked that up last month, and this month I went to the office a couple of times and picked up all the other prints that were sent out. So if.
Hey, Sean.
I'm having a hard time believing that there's not a system to get the documents to our consultants.
Hey, Sean?
Yes.
It's Stephanie. I think that's the disconnect. They're not getting mailed out. Because I don't have it either. And if I don't go to the village, I mean, I think they should be mailed out.
So Marcus, how can we fix this?
Um.
Get them mailed out.
Well, is Rosemary, are you going to be mailing it out or you want somebody from the office to mail it out? I thought it was Rosemary's responsibility as the secretary to get the information out to everybody. He just gets sent to the village. But if that's something Rosemary can't do, I can have my staff do it.
I had asked the Entergy people to, or anybody, to send them directly to you, David, and to George and Stephanie.
Did, all right, because I do remember last month we said that the consultants, as well as the Entergy representatives, were going to exchange the emails so that we would be able to communicate without having to go on a month-to-month basis. Ted, do you have the ability to send things to David Stolman as well as George Palmer?
Is he asking us? Is he asking us, can we send it? Can we send it tonight or have to be tomorrow?
No. I was under the impression you guys were sending things back and forth that you already had the lines of communication open.
We do. If you're looking for the whole form.
It's thirteen pages. I could send you guys a copy tonight if you want.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Excuse me, this is Cindy. I'm in the office now and I actually found a thirteen-page thing here. I don't really know what I'm looking at, but Sean, under brief description, it says installer one hundred and fifty-two feet by one thirty-nine. So that's the right one?
Yes.
That's the part one. There should be a part two also.
A part two, and how many pages is that?
I don't have a part two.
You don't have a part two, okay. Because I just scanned part one, I can send it out, and then I'll look for part two and send that out now, too. So who needs it? Or is it just?
Apparently, everybody but me.
Everybody but you, okay. I'll do that now.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
What other, George?
Yes, sir.
What do we need in order to set a public hearing?
Oh, to set a public hearing, in my opinion, a complete application. So as far as the drawings go, that's complete. We have an EAF, it's just not distributed. So if that is complete, you know, all the forms, all the boxes have been checked and filled out, you have a complete application, it would seem to me you can set a public hearing. If everybody agrees, if all the consultant, if David agrees and Stephanie agrees, then.
Do we need the part two EAF to do this or?
No, you don't, Sean. You don't, Sean. That's the Planning Board's responsibility, and we'll look at what they have provided so far.
Okay.
But you don't need that to set the public hearing.
Okay. A couple of questions I had about the drawings. There was discussions about having an emergency diesel power, and that wasn't listed on the drawings as well as any of the fuel storage unless I missed it. That should be included in the site plan, I would think.
Sean, is there more than one drawing?
Say again?
Is there more than one drawing?
Yeah, I picked one up the other day.
But is there more than one? I mean, is there, you said drawings.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I picked up a new drawing when I went down to the office since Entergy has applied it.
Just wanted to make sure.
Sean, if you might, I mean, Marcus has the ability to screen share that drawing if you'd like to put it up there, and then we can have a little dialogue based on the drawing. Marcus, that would be item number five, if you have the ability to put it up. If, in fact, Chairman Murray would like to see it on the screen. That's one. Go to five at the bottom. And for everybody who's taking a look at this perhaps for the first time, the existing Aswissi pad is located to the left. It's the grayish area. The proposed Aswissi pad number two is the pinkish check area inside the green trap rock perimeter, and then there's some site grading. And then underneath the right side wall, or the right side green, if you will, of the Aswissi pad two is the existing pond, which services the GSP and the GSP parking lot, which was done in two thousand and two. What we're proposing to do is to relocate that pond up into the GSP parking lot and route the discharge of the new pond, which will be bigger than the existing pond to the same level shredder that the existing pond discharges to. And then as far as the construction and the drain for Aswissi pad number two, it's going to go to the same location that the drainage from the north side of the Aswissi pad number one goes to. And then everything sort of migrates down a little bit to the northeast and then makes a turn to the west and goes into the Hudson River. And this is the plan that I discussed briefly earlier this week with George, and we are emphasizing the stormwater management. And one of the things that we'll be able to do here is actually make the new pond bigger than the existing pond, which will provide better stormwater management as far as quality goes. And then we discussed briefly how best to handle the increase or the runoff from the impervious area of the Aswissi pad number two, essentially in a trap rock perimeter that would then dissipate the water into the ground, and then any excess would be piped down to, as I said, the same location where the Aswissi pad number one discharges still. And this is essentially the plan that we'd like to be able to start with sooner than later, in part because we do have some pretty hard deadlines here that we're trying to meet. And before we can really start, I guess, removing some of the spent fuel out of the reactor, we need to get the pad built, and before we get the pad built, we got to build the pond and redirect the stormwater. So it is, there are some critical paths here, and I think right now the critical path is through the construction of the replacement pond or the new pond. So, but that's pretty much, that is the one plan we submitted. If there are some additional details, that'll be necessary for that, but, and certainly some computations that George would like to take a look at. But, I mean, sum and substance, I think this is a good starting point for us moving forward.
Does anybody else have any questions? Like I said, it had stated in the minutes that there's going to be an emergency diesel generator there as well as some other monitoring devices. The monitoring devices and the fencing should be included on the print as well as the location of the diesel and the fuel storage facility and the retention of the fuel storage also. You know, and a moat that has to go around it, the fifty percent capacity of the moat. I don't see that on the drawing. Is it going to be some other system that's already installed? Or is it going to be a new system?
Sean, it's going to be a new system. The terminology there is fuel on pad protected. So when all of the fuel is added to spent fuel pools, we will be submitting additional permit paperwork to install the diesel radiation monitoring system, additional security, and that's going to all occur. We're going to wrap all that up by May of two thousand and twenty-four, right? So obviously, we'll be submitting paperwork previous to that, right? But that'll be its own independent system, and it's the only protected area on the site when all is said and done. Until then, the DOE comes and removes the fuel. But that's later on, right? That's later on, and that's all being designed in parallel to this design work here.
Shouldn't that be included in the site plan amendment? George or David, if you're going to have a fuel oil storage as well as a diesel engine located someplace on there as part of the site plan, as part of the system, these. I don't see.
I would say so, yes.
We can probably work it both ways because all we're doing is wanting to build the pad and the storage, but they would have to come back and start the process for another site plan amendment. And that.
Sean, if I might, you know, the plan that you see in front of you is probably the eighth or tenth slight modification we made in working with Entergy Holtek in our office to try and accommodate their needs and still address the concerns of the village. Now, this was completed, I think, the day before the day of the deadline. So there are some details which definitely will need to be added, which we certainly can place on this plan and, you know, have no issue with that. But this, you know, these are the two major elements, but certainly everything you're asking for and then some, we can put on any subsequent plans we put together.
You know, we're going to be a little flexible with the ten-day timeframe, especially because we just lost thirty days through no fault of your own, through the village's fault. So if you could get that information as quickly as possible, and for Entergy, if you guys, whenever you send something to the village or any of the consultants, if you could just CC me that you sent something so I could do updates for myself to find out if this information is being properly disseminated. Because this is actually kind of embarrassing for the village not to have this information, and I'll have to take the fault for that for not overseeing it. But if you guys could do that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that'd be no problem, Sean.
Well, so George, what else do you think we need in order to set a public hearing? Like I said, I know you said you didn't have too many other issues with setting the public hearing as long as David can, you and David can review the full EAS that was submitted in October. And what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with you regarding the wanting a complete plan. You don't want to segment the plan and supplement it later on. You want to have everything upfront as much as possible. I'd like to ask how big of a footprint this generator and moat, is this going to be something that's going to be on the pad? Is, what is?
It'll be adjacent to the pad, in the area of the pad. It will not be on the pad.
And how big of a footprint are we talking about?
Thirty by thirty. Thirty by twenty-five.
Yeah, thirty by twenty-five. Not a big generator.
It's a security building. The security building is going to be there, obviously, the only building on the site when all is said and done, and all the emergency generator for is to keep our security systems energized. That's specifically what it's for. It would be a small, maybe fifteen-twenty KW generator. Nothing not much bigger than you'd have in your whole house generation.
Again, it's just for emergency power. If the normal power to the security system that's going to be around the pads, obviously, goes down. It's not, like Ted just said, it's not like the diesel showing that we have at work, right? I mean, it's nothing like that at all.
No, I understand. It should be denoted on the prints because there's regulations on the fuel storage, on storing the fuel oil. And if you have to have moats, you know, we're going to have to, it should be shown where the locations are going to be.
Yeah, so does this generator have a day tank under it or does it have a tank next to it? Or has that been decided?
Tank will be next to it.
Tank will be next to it.
Tank will be next to it, okay. And they make tanks that you can put a tank inside of a tank and have that storage that the chairman's talking about, so that shouldn't be a difficulty to put on there?
That's exactly what it would be. It would be a tank within a tank, obviously, for the safety purposes, and it would not be a large tank. It's just enough to keep the diesel boiling for hours, not weeks.
Until you could restore the normal power supply to the diesel, to the security system. Until you could restore the normal power supply to the diesel system, to the security system?
Absolutely.
Okay. Actually, yeah, that size, you wouldn't be that big at all. 15 KW.
Yeah, as long as the duty time is only a couple of days. But if you're postulating a duty cycle of 30 days, you might want a little more than that. But that's all on your guys' specifications. You could just throw it someplace on a print, or just put it in the notes or in the table?
Yeah, a lot of these generators have tanks under them that go up to three days, I think, three days of storage. So under, and it's a double long tank, so they're.
Sure. It's not a problem.
Nope.
All right, so here's what we'll do. We'll annotate where the diesel will go on the drawings and then we submit.
And Sean, as far as general layout, Tim mentioned, we went over the layout, the location. And he was going to talk a little bit about the sequencing of work, what's going to happen first, second, third, and get into that a little bit. I think he's got a few more slides to show.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was more to the presentation.
We jumped to the last slide, so if we go to the other ones, it's more or less, I think, showing the site in its entirety and then a couple of other ones. So yeah, Marcus, just go to one, two, three, and four, and take a look. So this is Indian Point Energy Center, the overall site. You can see sort of in the middle, towards the top, where the existing pads are. And to the right of that, lower right of that, you can see the existing pond. And then if you see like the blue in front of the GSP, which is the large dark building, more or less in the middle of the page, where that blue is, is going to be essentially where our new pond's going to go. And midway between that blue and the existing Aspissy pad is the pond. You can see some slightly dark spot. But that's essentially where we are on the property. So Marcus, if you go to number two, the next one down. This was the plan done in 2002 for the construction of the GSP. And you can see it's the somewhat darker outlined building and associated parking areas. Note that the Aspissy number one is not yet installed. That was done a couple of years later. So if you go to the next slide, that will show that. Hudson River's on the top. In this slide here, the Hudson River is to the left. That's pad number one. To the right of the pad is the pond. You can see the slight, you know, the circular contours. That's the existing pond and the existing parking area, which is where we're going to put the, which is where we're going to replace this pond too. And if you go to slide number four, and that's pretty much it. The blue is the new pond. The black outline is the new Aspissy pad, pad number two. And along the right edge of that black outline is the existing pond, which is obviously going to be eliminated and replaced with the blue. And you can see that the blue is bigger than the existing pond. And since at some point, all of this is going to be removed anyway, the parking area, we can take up as much parking areas as is necessary and then some to take care of the stormwater, because the parking area is not going to be necessary, you know, as time moves forward. And then the last slide is the one we were looking at just before, and that's it there. So, and you know, as I mentioned before, you know, the critical path, and I'm not, I'm not specific myself with what the dates are, but I do know the critical path is to get that pad constructed, so we can start moving some of the spent fuel out of the reactors. But before we do that, we got to get the pond built. And that's where I'd like to be able to work, you know, with George to address his concerns and the village's concerns and possibly get that pond started, you know, sooner rather than later. I know we got to go through a secret process. But, you know, the pond development itself is like 24, 25,000 square feet. So it is below the one-eighth threshold, but we're not looking to shortcut any of the requirements. We're just looking to possibly expedite the process to build the pond. And, you know, we'd like some, you know, comments from the village on that, realizing, of course, the new pond will be bigger than the existing pond.
So what do you think of that, David? And George?
In terms of getting started on the pond?
That's correct.
I think as soon as we can finish the secret process, as Tim said, they could get going, assuming that the village is in favor of the whole project.
I agree with that. I've looked at what Tim has laid out as far as the pond, the relocation, the sizing, the piping. Drainage pattern is in the same location as the existing drainage pattern. He's not creating a new drainage patterns or new discharge or new flow paths. It's following existing flow paths. It's the relocation of an existing pond to another location. So it's simple in nature.
So what do we need to finish the secret process, David?
Well, assuming this is not a type one action, we don't have to go through a designation of lead agency procedure. I'd like to look at the EAF, so we can classify this action either as type one or unlisted. And that'll dictate the process. So if we don't have to go through the designation of lead agency procedure, we can start moving in the direction of a negative declaration.
Okay, do we need a negative declaration to hold a public hearing?
No, no, you don't.
But if you review this paperwork, you could have the designation of a negative declaration by the public hearing, correct?
Assuming everything falls into place.
Okay.
But we have to type the action.
It's a long place besides your reviewing the papers.
If it turns out this is a type one action.
Yeah.
Then we have to circulate to the other involved agencies and declare our intent to be lead agency and then wait 30 days to hear back.
Okay.
If it's an unlisted action, we don't have to go through that process. So as soon as we can classify the action as type one or unlisted, we can then know the process which will follow.
I'm sorry, that's type two or unlisted, right?
No, type two is exempt from seeker.
I'm sorry, I think one.
So it's going to be a type one or unlisted action.
Rich, did you, what other approvals did you require for this project? Who else has to approve it? What other agency?
You got an unmuted there?
None, none that we're aware of. I mean, it would be internal to the site as far as our scheduling and planning of people go, but nothing external.
No other agencies have a permit or approval grant?
No.
Okay, then it doesn't matter. Then the planning board is the only agency, and it is therefore by default the lead agency. So we don't have to wait 30 days. So it doesn't matter whether we type it or type one or an unlisted action in terms of time.
Okay, but so does it matter if it's classified as a type one or type two for approval process?
We'll classify it either as type one or unlisted, but it doesn't really matter in terms of the time.
Okay, all right, I got you. All right.
We don't have to circulate for lead agency.
Okay.
The planning board is the lead agency, because there's only one agency involved.
And we, we're not, the project's not adjoining any municipalities, so we don't have to notify any adjoining municipalities, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
We'll have to determine whether we have to contact or send it to the county planning department as a referral.
What criteria will we have to send it to them for?
Well, if this is 500 feet within a variety of different
Okay.
features, different elements, we might have to send it down. We'll check that out.
So when you're reviewing the EAF, you'll make that determination for us?
Yes, we'll check that out next week for sure.
Okay, so as soon as you get that, could you let us know, so we don't have another time lag like we're having right now?
Absolutely.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Energy right now? Can George or David think of anything we would need for the public hearing? We're, I'm going to ask to set a public hearing. But what information would we require from Energy in order to close the public hearing?
If you're working towards a resolution, you might want to ask the board to ask David or yourself to ask David to generate a resolution.
Yeah, right up, yeah.
A draft resolution, sure. And a draft negative declaration.
Yes, those two things.
Yeah.
And then as far, Tim and I have talked extensively about drainage calculations and so forth. The first step was to get the basic scheme of how the water was going to flow. And then if everyone was okay with that, proceed with the calculations. So for the next meeting, before the next meeting, we should have those calculations, make sure that we're all comfortable with what we're approving.
And you guys have come to understanding on the SWPs?
Yes.
All right.
SWP would be needed, but it's not a major obstacle. I mean, it's calculations and stormwater and drainage and an NOI. Tim can get us an NOI for the SWP, so.
Okay, does any of the planning board members have any other questions?
One question, we keep mentioning timing. Rich, if you could talk us through your schedule, that would be good to know as well for the record.
Let's work backwards. We'll work backwards from fuel on pad protected is May of 2024. Prior to that, we would defuel unit three. Prior to that, we would defuel unit two. And prior to that, we would have unit three shut down. So I'll go the other way too. So unit three shuts down in April, April of '21. We start defueling unit two's spent fuel pool in April of '22.
That's correct.
Then we defuel unit three's pool in April of '23. And then we put the diesel and all the other packages together, so that it's a fuel on pad protected. That's the nomenclature used. And that'll be in place by April of 2024.
I could add just one more important date. We'll need this pad completed by September of 2022. That's when we run out of fuel room on the pad that we have installed now.
Yeah, we run out of cask room.
We run out, yes, exactly. So that pad has to be completed by that day.
And how long do you anticipate to build this pad?
It would be at least one calendar year, probably more like a year and a couple of months.
Start to finish.
Start to finish.
And that includes the retention pond.
Everything.
And then everything, right? Excavating for the new pad and then obviously pouring the concrete, then obviously this cure time, right?
There is a fair amount of material that needs to be removed and placed on an impervious surface to even think about putting the concrete down. So there's a fair amount of construction work to be done.
Okay, and then where is that material being trucked to?
It's being on the site.
That we made on site.
On an impervious surface. We have several parking lots in this site that are abandoned. So we'll be putting it on block top and plastic and every other thing that we need to put around it to keep that stuff in place.
Okay, and then eventually that material would be hauled offsite?
No, actually, that material will be destined to many areas on the site that need to be filled in after these buildings are removed. There'll be a need for fill, a crying need for fill at this site.
Okay. And then the other question is, what happens if you encounter rock?
We're going to encounter rock. There's no two ways about that. Rock, the bedrock is roughly 15 feet below the surface. We've done our core bore sampling. It happens to be probably the hardest rock or near the hardest rock in nature. And that will be taken out like we took out the last Aspissy rock issue. And that was with core boring and using a very large machine with stinger. We will not, by any stretch of the imagination, be using any blasting or anything like that. It's going to be mechanically removed.
How was it?
Anybody else?
Well, some may be asking why the location that we picked. And again, we want to emphasize that it's as close to the existing pad as possible, because at the end of the day, that's the only protected area. And what that will allow, will allow the village additional land for reuse when all is said and done.
Exactly.
So that's really why we picked the location we picked, right? Both for the village and for the fact that it shrinks just the protected area on site.
Jeff, were your questions answered satisfactor, or would you like to hold, discuss it at the public hearing some more, or do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Pretty much all my questions were answered. It's just that the monitoring of the groundwater is going to be an issue. That's the only fourth thing I'm going to think that's going to come back.
Okay, David and George, can you address Jeff's concern and coordinate with Ted and Rich to see what's somehow to think about a monitoring or if to grab samples? Or I don't know if you had thought about any monitoring, Dave or George, but I know in the minutes that we discussed last month, there was going to be some radiation monitoring. Maybe they could be at certain locations or.
So yeah, let's go through that for just a second. We're monitoring for radiation. These casks from the first application are sealed very tightly. That's how they function and that's how they work. There shouldn't be any leakage of radiation. And Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is there any other installation which would require, that you know of where they have groundwater monitoring for radiation?
Well, let's just, we'll be perfectly clear. Around the site, we do have monitoring wells, but nothing next to the existing pad. And you're right, George, it's based on the design of the casks that are, that the fuel will be stored in. So the existing pad doesn't have monitoring wells either, right? And so the expansion is just going to be consistent with the design of the existing pad.
I just wanted to have a rationale behind it, because this might be a question that comes up at a public hearing. And I'd like to have an engineering rationale to justify either not doing it or having something that we could install to, if there was an issue. So if we could just brainstorm some way to answer that question from a member of the public. And if our board members have that issue, I'm sure somebody from the public might too. So if we could just come up with some kind of clear justification that there's a good rationale not to have it. I understand what you're saying, Rich, but there's always another way to skin a cat. We could get a couple more ideas together too, you know?
Fair enough.
One thing we should definitely note though, in these casks, there is no liquids of any kind. We're introducing no liquids in these casts or to the pad or anything. They're dried, super dried, and there's a helium gas on top of that with no moisture whatsoever. So does everybody understand that? There's no water up there.
It's a dry cask system.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure we all understand it. But somebody from the public might say, well, these casts are going to be here for 100 years. Are you going to go out there and check, is there a gauge where you can monitor the helium pressure inside? And if there's zero helium pressure, that means there's no helium. That means there's condensation. That means there could be a leak pad. So if you could say, yeah, you know, our plan is to go out and inspect this or look at this, then that would be part of a justification for not having a monitoring system.
I understand. And we'll have something together ready to go for the public hearing.
All right.
I understand the point exactly.
Hey, Sean.
Yes, sir.
The only reason I brought that up, because I know there are well monitoring systems in place now, but as they decommission that site, them wells are going to get filled in. So to protect the last remaining secured spot, that's why I brought that up.
Well, maybe, Rich, you can go over why those wells were installed prior to the first Aspissy pad being put in there, what the actual purpose of those wells were.
Well, the monitoring wells that are on site now have nothing to do with the existing Aspissy pad. So I just wanted to make that clear. What they are doing is they're monitoring some issues that we've had in the past with regards to leaks, like everybody knows, right? So we monitor those on a regular basis. They are strategically placed around the plant, right? But again, there are no monitoring wells where the existing Aspissy pad is. And mainly because of what Ted said, this is a dry system. It's not a system where there's any fluids or liquids within the canister where the fuel is. But the existing monitoring system is there just based on spills that we've had in the past.
And this is a much higher elevation.
Well, if nobody has any further comments or questions.
I guess, just one more point, right? This pad is at an elevation 90 feet. It's 90 feet above the river, right? So it's not like we're down by the river elevation either, which would then tell you again that, you know, the monitoring wells, we just don't need them.
But I agree with Jeff and I agree with you, Sean. We'll put something together so that if asked at the public meeting, we'll have an answer.
So if nobody has anything else to add, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the Aspissy pad installation at Indian Point for December 17th. Can somebody make that motion for me?
I make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we're, if you guys could just call, if Entergy can call the clerk's office and they, Cindy will give you a list of, of people you have to notify, the, the property owners around the, the project. And you have to send out certified mail that you're having a public hearing for a site plan amendment. Like I said, she'll give you a list. Then after you receive the receipts that you've sent out the certified letter, whether deliverable or undeliverable, just to show that you, you made the attempt. You have to submit those to the village for the public hearing. So that we can verify that the public has been noticed of the site plan amendment.
We, we understand. What do you suggest, Sean, as the timeframe when you have to send out the certified mail?
You send it out as soon as you can. There, there's, there's, you can send them out tomorrow if you want. Just, you have to just keep the receipts and the notifications that you made the attempt. When somebody signs it, you'll get the receipt. And if it's not deliverable, you get confirmation that it's not deliverable. And that's, that's all, that's all you need. Also, like I said, if you could, when you send something to the village or to the consultants, if you just CC me and let me know that you actually sent it, so I can verify that the parties who are supposed to receive this information have gotten it.
Understood.
And one more thing, sorry, this is Stephanie. For Rich, I'll prepare, I prepare the legal notice that you will mail out. So I can have that to the village in the morning. We can pass it along to you, along with the addresses and?
What time in the morning, Stephanie?
Probably by 10.
I'll be there.
Yep, sounds good. We'll be there.
Okay.
If there's nothing else for Entergy, I'll, I said we'll, we'll talk next month.
All right. The village, for the cooperation tonight. It was a good meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're signing off. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In that last application, is David going to generate those resolutions?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to be able to look at the, the part one.
Okay.
You know, and if he really doesn't have too many issues or if he thinks that, if he thinks that they can be overcome within the 30 days, if he could draft those resolutions. So if we close the public hearing, we can make that declaration, that'd be great. I don't want to, I, I would like David to be able to talk to Entergy to work, work out the problems to, in order to draft the resolutions. Do you, you do have the ability to contact, to communicate with Entergy, right, David? And has Ted Gatto or Rich been contacting you at all?
No, no, not yet, but we will. We'll talk.
All right. I appreciate it, you guys, because I really like to do things in real time. And it was actually kind of embarrassing that a piece of paper that was sent almost two months ago hasn't even been reviewed. I know I picked it up last month and I only did it because I went down there to, I usually walk, go down to the office and see if there's anything in the box, you know, and I know you don't do that. So there should be a mechanism, hopefully Marcus and Rosemary can work it out where the people get the information that's requested. Because it, it shouldn't be sitting there for 30 days.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that. All right, let's change gears here.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Rosemary.
I've been here for 40 years.
Say again?
I, I have asked if the applicants can send the information directly to Stephanie, to George. So there is no lag time.
They can, and we made that agreement last month. But for some reason, that, that didn't happen. So that's why I was, I wanted to know where the breakdown was. You know? So David and George say that they can communicate with Entergy. Can you communicate, can you, can Stephanie communicate with Entergy? Steph, can you?
Um, I can, but that's not how I remember this ever going. So I, I thought I got it from the village.
Yeah, that's, everything usually comes to the village and the village is responsible to disseminate that information. That's the way the process is, has always worked and should work. There's like one point of contact and, and I, I would like to maintain it that way because things get too fragmented the other way. So I would like the Entergy, I'd like the village, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, it's written in the code that everything has to be submitted to the village. That's the way the code's written and that's the way the rules are, correct?
Uh, that's correct. And it was, it's close to go to the Secretary of Post of Planning and the zoning board. And that's where the information that was, this, it'd be sent out from that point. If we want to change that and, and put it in to the clerk's office, then that's something we could discuss. But that's not what the process has always been.
I really don't want to change that now. I, I had wanted them to communicate in real time so that we didn't have a lag. But that wasn't for the submission of documents. That was for more question and answer kind of thing. So that people can move things along, you know, and emailing, you, you missed this check mark and stuff like that. Now, hey, can you send me this drawing, this print, this EAF? So I would like to still have the village being in receipt of all documentation and disseminated to the parties.
That's fine, but I'm saying the information comes in, we put it in a folder for Rosemary to distribute to everybody else. And that's what the process has always been.
All right, let's, let's take this offline. We'll discuss this later. I don't want to hold up the rest of the applicants.
Sure.
Next, we have a public hearing for steep slopes permit to construct a modular concrete retaining wall for the property 226 Travis Avenue, Calibro. The, has the applicant supplied the receipts for the public hearing?
Well, I, I forgot to drop them off, but I have them all here.
All right. Can you bring them down to the office tomorrow and give that to them? So we, we won't hold it up. He, he has them, but we'd like to verify that they were all, the number that came in and the number that went out and stuff like that. If you could just drop them off.
How many came in? We usually have?
Yeah.
How many came back? How many did you send?
Um, I sent, I sent all I was told. I mean, I didn't count them. I can count now.
Okay, uh?
Over 22, over 30. I know we sent out about 40 of them.
And how, how many, how many came back that there was received?
About 22.
All right.
So, about?
Yeah. Drop, drop them, drop them off tomorrow or the next day down in Village or tomorrow's Friday. So just drop them off as soon as you can. Rosemary, can you take those copies? Count them and put them in the record as to the number that were sent out, the number that were received and the number that came back undeliverable. Okay? Can you do that?
Yeah. Are you going to continue to get receipts? Return cards from people?
Yeah, I can run them down and bring them to Cindy right now if you want me to.
No, no, hang on. Don't worry about it. We're, we're not going to hold up the public hearing. You, you have them. You just dropped them off.
Okay.
All right. So I just would like to get an accurate count for the record. You know, you're saying about 40, maybe 22, whatever. Just if you could just bring them down to the office. Rosemary can count them. Rosemary, then you can put them into the minutes as to proper notification of a public hearing and we'll review it next month, okay?
Okay.
All right. So can I have a motion to open a public hearing for steep slope permit, 226 Travis Avenue?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, if you, could you, uh, either you, Mr. Calibro or your representative go over the project briefly for the people who are listening online who weren't here last month?
Mr. Ciancia is on the line. I'm going to ask that Mr. Ciancia handle that aspect of the engineering that was performed for the, for the work that was done. Mr. Cian, Dan, are you there?
I'm here.
All right.
My name is Dan Ciarcia. My firm, CRC Engineering, represented the applicant, Brian Calibro, in preparing plans to construct a retaining wall in the rear yard of his property. We prepared the plans. They were submitted to the village. And my client was given the green light to proceed to build the wall. And at some point, essentially after the work was complete, we were advised that we needed a steep slopes permit to, to do the construction that was done. So we're, we're here before the planning board looking for, I suppose, a retroactive approval to go through our project and to, you know, explain how we complied with your regulations. And, you know, we do need a steep slopes permit. When we last appeared before you, we had not done a slope analysis. And in our recent submittal to the village, we provided a slope analysis map which illustrates the slopes that are in excess of 15%. It's colored in that you have a yellow color representing slopes that are 15 to 30%, which is one category in your regulations. And then the red indicates the, the slope areas that are in excess of 30%. So when you look at the, the area, we absolutely, based upon, we do have steep slopes. So therefore we are subject to those regulations and would require a permit. One of the, the key issues in your steep slopes legislation is to ensure that by constructing a project, you're not creating a destabilizing situation which could cause erosion or slope failures. And by the nature of the project, building a retaining wall, essentially the steep slope was effectively eliminated. So there's actually less risk of erosion or slope failure. So we believe we, we haven't, what we've done is not contrary to that objective of the regulations. Nothing we're doing here in any way increases the potential density on the lot. The residence on there is conforming. The lot itself conforms by virtue of area. Unfortunately, where the house was originally constructed now is in an area that's non-conforming. But otherwise, the, the house itself and, and the lot conforms to the zoning. One of the other issues, we did not build the wall at the property line. We did consider the trespass by the neighbor who constructed a shed on Mr. Calibro's property. We avoided that shed in, quite frankly, just to try and be a good neighbor about it and not get into a confrontation about the trespass and having a remedy. So that was the reasoning behind where the wall was located. I think an issue came up in terms of the wall bowing out as a indication of imminent failure. That's really how it was constructed in that it was pulled back to, to not disturb the shed and then sort of moved slightly more toward the property line as the, the wall proceeds to the, as you face the property, the right side of the property. So that's, that's the, the essence of our application. And we're here tonight to, to hear any questions or to answer any from the public or any concerns the, the board may have on this matter.
Last month of looking at the pictures of the construction. Hang on, Nick. I'll let, Nick, you're gonna have to wait a second, Nick. In looking at the pictures last, last month, and we had discussed this, that the blocks were interlocking in the horizontal plane. Some of them were sticking out. There were other gaps. But you said that's the way it was designed for drainage. Am I correcting that, Mr. CRC?
Well, I mean, it's the nature of the product. These retaining wall systems, all the modular block systems do not have locking between the, the blocks on the same plane. That's pretty common. So the interlock is really between the, the levels. So there is like a key where these blocks stack into each other that interlocks them from sliding forward toward the, the downhill side.
I'd like to suggest at the public hearing, anybody from the public who'd like to raise their hand or would like to talk, the, the Marcus, did you go over with them how they can be recognized?
Yeah, so let me, anybody that's on the attendee list, all they do is raise their hand. The chairman will see that, or he'll recognize it and I'll unmute you. So if anybody wants to say anything, please raise their hand and the chairman will recognize you and I'll, I'm, 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 well, get unmuted. So we'll wait for that.
So would anybody like to comment? I, I know there's, there's four people here. There's, one probably won't have any comments, but the other three people like to comment? I know, Nick, you had something you wanted to say. Go ahead, Bob. That'll be Robert T. Do I unmute him or do you?
Just, he's unmuted. He can speak now.
Go ahead. Robert T.
I can't hear him.
No, he's still muted, Marcus. He still has a, a red line through his microphone.
Yeah, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
All right. I don't know if you're going to be able to see these pictures, but this wall was just built recently by John Bazella. Can you see that?
No, we cannot see you. Okay, let me see if I can. We cannot see you. All we can do is hear you.
Oh, hold on. Wait a minute.
Name and address, please.
Bob Thompson, 221 Tate Avenue.
Thank you.
Not allowed to use this stupid thing. The wall's not aligned.
So Robert, I moved you up to panelist, so you should be able to turn on your video now if you wish. On the bottom of the screen, it says turn on your video, start video, and then we'd be able to see you and then you can show whatever you want to the board. There you go.
Yes, okay. We see you're, you have the drawing or you have the, the blocks that you're talking about a wall construction with interlocking blocks.
Right. You see how they interlock? You see you got a cap and then you see the V? And then you got the next block. And on the end of the block, there's another V that locks into the other block. So it all locks together. What he used didn't have those Vs on it. In his engineer report, it shows that he has the Vs on the block and that's not what he used. I said that from when he started it. He's not using the right block. See on this?
I can't see it.
On, on the drawing, on his drawing that he submitted, it shows those same Vs that you're talking about.
Yes, but he didn't use that. The block he has, has like an inch and a half V on the top of it. The lifting hook is higher than the V. And what John Bazella told me and the two other people I had looked at it, they said over time, as the dirt settles, it's going to keep pushing the block out and with the frost and the ice. And eventually it's going to push the blocks down. And then he has these big gaps. I got pictures of all of it. And on each end, he has two big holes in the bottom of the wall that dirt eventually is going to wash out, start coming out.
George, have you had a chance to review the drawings and the pictures?
I did, and I spoke to Dan at length. And Dan is basically the designer of the, the wall. And it's up to the designer of the wall is that, is, does Dan have any issues with all these, the gaps? And as he said earlier, you know, these are, it's not uncommon to have gaps between the walls. it's not uncommon to have gaps between the walls, between the blocks. Dan, do you have any problem with certifying? Or do you have any concerns with wall failure of this, what was built?
Well, this wall, the wall is designed to be a gravity wall. So it relies heavily on gravity, and the keyway between the courses resists the sliding. So there's gaps between the blocks, and that's typical, really, of any modular block system. Some of them have smaller gaps, but obviously that prevents water from building up. Now, the other part, the concern about the soil coming through, behind the wall was backfilled with crushed stone. And there was also filter fabric to prevent the migration of the soil from getting into the stone and ultimately clogging the stone, impeding the drainage and perhaps, you know, migrating and coming out of the face of the wall. So that the backfill that was installed basically prevents that.
So what you're saying is there shouldn't be any drainage coming from the face of the wall in the area between the blocks? Is that what you're saying?
Well, because you have, I mean, the more drainage you have with a retaining wall, the better. Because the concern always is that you get a saturated soil, and that causes a slope failure. You really wanna have good drainage. So all this crushed stone is behind the wall, so ultimately it'll drop down along the crushed stone and then leap out at the bottom. It'll just find its way out at the lowest point. But they really should never, the water should never build up with the amount of crushed stone behind it that it actually comes up, that it bleeds out at a higher elevation.
So what happens if it does? What happens if, over ten or fifteen years, there's a silt buildup around the stones where it blocks that kind of drainage that you're talking about?
Well, that's the reason for putting the filter fabric, to prevent soil from migrating into the stone. And I think Brian put a pretty generous amount of stone behind there, so it extends quite a bit out from the rear face of the wall. So it's really a very conservative backfill.
So, did you verify the amount of stone that was in it? Because you said you think you put in enough. Are you verifying, how much did you put in?
I wasn't out there throughout the construction, but I was provided with some photographs.
All right, so who was there to do the installation inspections as it was being installed? Did anybody verify what's in there?
Nobody.
I was only out there in the beginning and toward the end, and as I said, there were photographs that were provided.
So you put in PVC drains underneath there. Anybody verify the drains are installed? According to your drawing...
I defer to the photos.
According, well, you'd have to see them before any rocks get in there because they're at the base of the excavation.
Right, but I wasn't there throughout construction.
But you feel comfortable verifying that the wall was constructed as per your drawings without having any independent inspections?
The photographs, yes.
So you have a picture of PVC being installed? Is that what you're saying?
I will, I guess what I can do is provide the village with photographs. Ultimately, I bear the responsibility as a design professional that if I sign off on something, and I don't sign off on stuff unless I'm sure things were done properly.
But we try not to get to the point where we have to have you deposed because of the failure. You know, that's the whole purpose of going through this process.
I don't like to be deposed because of the failure. I've done quite a few retaining walls, and fortunately, one of them have ever fallen down.
Absolutely. Congratulations. But where, you have this PVC drain. Where is the termination points for these drains? Because if you put a drain in, then something has to come out of the pipe eventually. So where do they go?
On the end of the wall.
So on each side of the wall, there's an open pipe for the water to drain out?
Just on the one side, it's, gravity takes the force and it comes out on the one end.
On the drawing, show me where the drain is.
I can show you the picture of it.
Is it on the...
Picture's on...
I can't see that. So that's inside. So where is that water draining out? I mean...
The far end of the wall.
North, southeast, or west? Is it towards, where's it towards?
It's called the southern side.
Okay, so it's to the left. As you're viewing it from the Thompson property, it's to the right. Is that what you're saying?
To the shed, correct.
There was a letter that was submitted by Mr. Thompson, and he has a concern about the construction similar to what he had just stated. These were the same questions that we had asked last month. And if you do remember, we had asked, we wanted to have the public hearing to see if there's any way that any of the property owners who had an issue could have their issues rectified. And one of the things in the letter was stated, what happens if there is a failure? And I had alluded to it last month before seeing this letter, because as you know, I just saw it a half an hour ago. I had alluded to the possibility of maybe having an insurance rider for the structural stability of the wall or for any kind of repair or maintenance that might occur, or even a failure that would occur. So I hadn't discussed that with Mr. Thompson. It's just from what we had spoken about last month. And I was wondering if that, or what would satisfy Mr. Thompson's concerns?
I think, if I may, I think that those concerns were addressed by what Dan had indicated, that it was all done pursuant to, you know, his drawings, that there was sufficient, the backfill, but the crushed rock that was back there, not to mention the fact that, you know, as the designer, we have Dan's engineering expertise to back, you know, the building of this wall. And so I think to the extent that, you know, Mr. Thompson raises concerns, I mean, and if he also read the letter, he also indicated he's had people look at it. We don't know who these people are, you know, anybody can look at it. And so to the extent that what we're talking about is the engineering of a wall that was performed by a licensed engineer and certified by the engineer, I think the village itself should be satisfied, you know, with that certification.
Well, we would have been satisfied if the whole process was followed in the beginning, so we could have had our engineer look at the inspection, you know. If everything, if everything is so perfect with it, what's the problem with insurance?
Well, now on top of everything else, you're asking for Mr. Calabro to come out of pocket, you know, for something that, you know, will never occur.
Well, Mr. Calabro is also asking for us to go above the thirty percent steep slopes disturbance and a whole lot of things he's asking for us to do. And we're trying to come to a happy medium.
Understood.
You know.
Okay.
The things weren't done right to begin. I know he made the initial effort. I know he did everything he could to do it correctly. And unfortunately, the village let him down and let the neighbors down by allowing that construction without following the process. However, as I alluded to last month, we can't continue to make mistakes, we have to do what's right. So if we can come to some sort of simple agreement where everybody is satisfied, we won't have any issues. But too many things were done wrong. And, you know, I hate trying to...
I got you, Sean.
No, I mean, it's very frustrating to me. Because the guy's trying to do what's right. He's a business owner, his family's big, he's got two businesses here, you know. And the village always takes a bad rap for being tough on people. And I hate being tough on people who are trying to do the right thing. I'm just trying to work it out, you know. And code clearly stated that you had to have the steep slopes analysis, that it's very difficult for us to go over thirty percent, but we can use all these different rationales to go over it. But we need a little give and take. You know what I mean?
Understood. Well, let me ask you this, and I understand that. And to the extent that the village is willing to work with Mr. Calabro, that's fine. I guess the question becomes, in terms of this insurance policy that, you know, the village is looking for, exactly what would it be?
I'm just floating the idea, I want to hear what Mr. Thompson...
No, I understand, no, no.
If Mr. Thompson doesn't want it, I don't want it. You know, I'm just trying to help and protect the property owner. You know what I mean? Because we don't only represent the applicant, we represent the people who could be aggrieved by it. That's why we have the public hearing process.
Correct, sure.
I want to hear what Mr. Thompson has to say.
Okay.
What do you think, Mr. Thompson?
Well, that still isn't gonna resolve the problem what I gotta look at. You know, he increased the value of his property and lowered the value of mine. You know, you come up in my yard, and you see this up the wall. You can see it right from Ketchikan Avenue as you're driving by.
Well, I'm sure we can work out something on the aesthetic purposes, on the aesthetic front, if that's your main concern. But your letter alluded to...
The other thing is, he didn't pin anything, and there was no proper footing. He packed down the dirt and laid this rock. There was no footings, and usually, from what I read and what we had people tell us, that if you're going over a certain height, you have to pin it. If that's what takes so long, you gotta drill it and set pins to hold it, keep it from shifting, especially if you're backfilling, and especially if you're backfilling with rock. It's heavier, especially with freezing, it's gonna expand more.
Listen, I understand that, and there are many, there are several systems out there for this application. This might not have been the best one for, but it is an engineered structure that the engineer is verifying to be...
So then why wouldn't you put an insurance rider on it then?
Well, listen, I'm just asking if...
If he's so confident in it, then put an insurance on it.
I had brought this up last month, and I'm just trying to figure out a way, if the aesthetics is the big issue, then we can work with the aesthetics. If the structural stability is...
Both are, the problem is hideous. Both of them is bad. You know, the wall's built bad, the way it looks is bad. I mean, you know, he's thinking of himself, he doesn't care about anybody else around him.
Well, let's not make those things, because like I said, Mr. Thompson, he did try to do the right thing in the beginning. We had an issue with the building inspector and some procedural violations.
I told the building inspector he's using the wrong block. I talked to John Bazella, who also does work for the village. He's very well-known. And he says, Bob, he says that wall is not gonna stay up.
I have to, I have to really jump in on this. Because, as I say, I'm the engineer who designed this. And in reading Mr. Thompson's letter, he's indicating that he had some people come out and look. And basically, the conclusion of these people was that the wall is not structurally sound. I can't speak for two of the individuals, but I did speak to John Bazella today, and I asked John if he indicated that this wall is not structurally sound. And that's not what John told me. So if it isn't structurally sound, I think the applicant should get something in writing from somebody else. Because at least the one reference that I spoke to did not confirm what the board is being told in this letter.
No, listen, I know that it could be part conjecture, it could be part anything. I understand that. And I understand there are many systems, different systems that are installed that are for different applications. You're guaranteeing this, Mr. CRC, and, you know, there are certain rules that we have to go by where we can't, there are certain laws that we can't pick somebody else's engineering report over a licensed engineer. You can't just search around until you find one that you like. So I know you're staking your claims on it. I know Mr. Garcia is staking his claims on it, as well as Mr. Calabro. I would like to find a way where everybody could move this project forward. If there's a requirement for, I wouldn't even know.
As far as the aesthetics go, I mean, Brian made an attempt. He put up a lattice to try and soften the look of the concrete face of the wall. And he's not unwilling to do other things to improve the aesthetics.
No, I'm sure that can be worked out, that's something that's minor. I think, I'm sure some agreement can come together for an aesthetic value or purpose, all right? What's the rest of the, is there anybody else from the public? And we'll get back to you, Mr. Thompson, in a second. I just want to make sure that anybody else from the public has the opportunity to speak. Because I see there's two, there's a village board member on as well as a zoning board member. So if they have anything they would like to add or any questions that they have, I feel free to raise your hand. Go ahead, Nick. Marcus, I'm recognizing Nick. Oh, wait, he just got off. Would you put him on as a panelist?
Yes, I did, to make it easier to communicate, yes.
What do you have?
Okay, there, you can hear me now? No, I just, I mean, you know, I'm leaving the process to you, I just have one question. The regrading, is that part of the steep slopes permit? Or is it a separate issue? Because there is a limit to how much soil you can move without approval. And it's a fairly small amount. If I'm not mistaken, it's a few inches or so. So I just wanted to know if that's part of what you're reviewing in terms of a steep slope permit? And whether there needs to be one? Or is it a separate issue?
We were reviewing the entire grade of the property. We had given the applicant permission to stabilize the front of his property where he had removed some trees and a little bit of rock, which made it unstable for the change of seasons as well as rain. So we gave him that permission. The grading was listed, if I'm not mistaken, on the drawing for the steep slopes. So it was all addressed. However, the yardage and the square footage, I don't believe, was listed on the drawing itself. So to answer your question, it was partially addressed, but not to the extent which you're asking.
Okay. I mean, you know...
Because what we are discussing is the entire grade, because there was things changed in the back and in the front and on the side. And that's when we had requested a tabulation for what the slope was beforehand. As we were assured last month that everything was gonna be below, it was gonna be in between fifteen to thirty percent. But however, the majority seems to be above thirty percent disturbance. But that grading had already taken place, and it was taking place under the permission of the previous building inspector. So that's where we're having a quandary as to who is responsible as to why.
Okay.
You know, so whatever we... If we don't come to a solution, the village is the one that's gonna have to pay for everything to be fixed. And I'd rather not do that, because that's not in the best interest of everybody. So that's what I'm trying to avoid here.
Okay, so along with the other stuff, the building inspector, okay, the moving of all that backfill to the retaining wall?
Yeah, he... I found that kinda strange too, but then Mr. Calabro showed us the signed document that he got, I think it was in September or April, or not April, August or September, that allowed him to do all of this. And then he was told verbally not to do it anymore once there were some complaints about what was going on. And you might talk to Marcus or have an executive session about the initiating events which led up to events of last month.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, I...
Yeah, he tried to do what was right to begin with, and he went down a wrong path. And we were trying to fix it without hurting anybody else.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just wanted to ask that question. I leave it to you and the legal counsel, you know. It's tricky, and you're doing a good job there. So I just wanted to ask that question, thank you.
You got it, thanks, Nick. Does anybody else from the public have any questions? Okay. So let's get back to the crux of the argument. What can we do to come to an agreement? First, let me ask Marcus and Rosemary, has anybody else from the public sent in any letters or made any inquiries into this? Because as you know, in accordance with the public hearing notification, it allows for written correspondence. So has the village received any other written correspondence other than from Mr. Thompson? So, have, has the village received any other written correspondence other than from Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have never received anything else.
Okay, how about you, Rosemary?
No, I have not.
Okay, is there anybody on the line other, other than who's, who has become an attendee of the meeting? Has anybody called in during the public hearing?
No.
Okay, so let's get back to how we can rectify the situation as, as to the structural stability. I know, Mr. Garcia, I know you're, you believe that it was done a hundred percent, and you're ready to sign off on everything. And Mr. Garcia believes that's all that is required by law, so what can we do? How, how can we come to an agreement here? What do you, what do you think, what, what are you? I hate to ask Mr. Calabro what he's willing to do, but what, I know you'd be willing to work with Mr. Thompson on the aesthetics of it, right? That, that, I saw the fence from Tate Avenue too, that looks kinda, kinda goofy there, but. But the problem being is that, that, when you cover that up, you can't see what's actually going on behind the structure. So, that's always been an issue that I've had about covering up structural walls, because you can't see what's happening with it, whether water's coming out of one area, whether one thing is cracked after a thermal cycle of the seasons, you know, so. What, what would you like, Mr. Thompson, or what could you do, Mr. Calabro, just on the aesthetic portion right now? Let's, let's get to the, the easy one first.
I'm willing to work with Mr. Thompson on, you know, whatever, you know, whatever the beautification needs on the wall. I have ivy vine, I didn't plant yet, I was waiting to, after this meeting, to go down and put some topsoil down there so ivy vine can grow up and down the wall.
What do you think about that, Mr. Thompson? How about some kind of natural wall? Something, something that makes it look aesthetically pleasing, do you have any ideas?
Well, like a stone veneer would look nice, you know, I mean, if I gotta look at a wall, look at something that looks nice, I mean. That plastic falls down, then I will be looking at, you know, plain nasty old concrete. I mean, with big gaps and holes and everything else.
Do you think you got, I'm really not comfortable with asking both of you guys to work it out amongst yourselves, because you might get into a fight in the backyard, and that, that wouldn't go too well. So, do you want, how about, how about this? How about, Mr. Thompson, you submit a couple of ideas in writing and just send them over to the village. Mr. Calabro, you send a couple of things down, and we can, we can discuss it at the next, at the next meeting, alright? We won't have a public, we won't continue the public hearing on this portion of it. But if you guys could just throw something down, what you're willing to do, what you're willing to do, maybe we can come to, come to that, that issue.
That's a good idea.
As far as the block goes, it's gonna stay, right?
There are some legalities where we can't make them remove it because of the licenses and how the permission was given and who's signing off on it. So, we can't tell them to take that block out.
Okay, and how about an insurance rider on it then, if he's so confident, right?
So, now, I'm just floating this idea.
It's gonna be expensive to get the crane to lift those out of there when it falls down.
Well, I, I understand that, but the insurance would only be to protect any of your damages. If he would have to take that, if the wall falls down and he gotta pick it up, that's all on him, that's not on you.
Yeah.
You know, we could probably write up a, a resolution, or, Mr. Garcia, do you think you could write something up that pertains to that, that any damage that were to come from a failure of that wall will be the sole responsibility of either Mr. Calabro or Mr. CRC?
Yeah, we can prepare that.
Alright, so that any, I don't like putting monetary values on something that's in perpetuity, you know, so. How, how would you feel about something in writing like that, Mr. Thompson?
Well, I was just thinking, but what if, two years down the road, Brian decides to sell the house?
No, we could, we could, we could attach it to the deed. That this would be, this would be a transferable agreement that stays with the property forever.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so when the title company does a title search and they pull the file, and also, Stephanie, we would, I would want this sent to the county also, attached to the, the property in the county, can we do that too? Because, you know, sometimes our property files don't reflect what happened ten or twenty years ago. What do you think, Stephanie, are you there?
You absolut, you absolutely would do that.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think, I think, I think David and I should talk some as well, off, offline here, because, you know, what's the, what's, Mr. CRC, what's the lifespan of this kind of wall? I mean, you're gonna do this, you know, for a hundred years, two hundred years?
Lifetime of the wall.
I like to think I'm gonna live a long life, but it'll go well beyond my days on, on this earth. I mean, I think it's, you know, it seems like a sort of a strange place we're going here in terms of this liability. It's, we're, I think we're entering onto a real slippery slope here.
Yep.
I mean, the, you know, as far as my liabilities as a design professional, they're well-known to the courts and where I could end up if something goes haywire. But of course, the, you know, these things, you know, if somebody doesn't maintain it, or somebody does something else. I mean, we even have the issue that Mr. Thompson has a trespass right up against the property. So, is stuff that he owns that's not on his property, if that gets damaged, is, is that, is that Mr. Calabro or any of his successors' problem that something that's trespassing on their property gets damaged?
When was, when was the last survey done? Is that staked out, is that verified that it is not on the property?
Yes, we have a cer, we have a survey, an updated survey dated, give me one second, hang on, I have it here. It's recent, it was this year, done this year, March thirtieth of this year.
Okay, so it was all staked out and verified that that shed was on there? Because I don't see, I, I see the shed listed on the, I, I see what a property line is, but I didn't know when it was, if it was staked out or when-
Yeah, that, the site, the site plan is based upon that recent survey, that's what we, that's what we utilize.
Do, Stephanie, do you think you and David Garcia can work out a wording for a rider on a property to ensure that the maintenance is kept up on this wall, as well as any failure of the wall is the responsibility of the property owner? Think we could write up a resolution like that, or something like that?
I mean, David had.
I would be more than happy to sit down with this party and, and go over it. There are some legal issues that, that need to be discussed regarding that.
Agreed.
Yeah. Because as Mr. CRC says, we do, we're getting into some uncharted territory there.
Well, I understand that, but this, this probably wouldn't have been, this probably wouldn't have been constructed if we knew that was over thirty percent grade too, you know?
And, you know what, and I wanted to discuss that really briefly with George, George, you awake?
I'm here.
We, we've had other, other people in the village or other applicants that have disturbed, you know, grades like this. And are you satisfied with what they did to either backfill or regrade? Or, and I'm talking about the slope in general, and not, not only limited to the wall? I mean, have you been out there?
Uh, I, I'm not sure which, because there's a slope on top of the wall, and there's a slope to the sides.
No, we're talking, George, we're talking about the back, strictly the back, not the side, the back.
I'm talking about the back, right, for the moment.
So, so they changed it from a steeper slope to a shallower slope, so that, what Dan had said earlier was, you've made it more stable, that's, that's, that's an accurate statement. But I think you're alluding to something else which is setting a precedent for disturbance, which we don't want to do.
No, we don't.
No, you don't, and the code says that we have to have rationale to allow for it. And I tweeted to it last, last month, that part of it says that the property owner has no other use for that property without doing that disturbance.
Correct.
That, that, that doesn't fall into that category. But the category it does fall into is a compelling reason to allow it. Not a compelling reason was that he already had permission to do it. So, you know, if any other applicant within the village gets permission from the village to do something, well, we're not gonna change it, you know what I mean? That could be a compelling reason, because he attempted to, he attempted to perform the construction in accordance with our rules. We might not have approved it through this process, but it was approved by another agent of the village. So, to me, that is a compelling reason to allow it the way it is.
I agree with that, and, and to not have it be a precedent, what we usually do in a resolution is articulate those compelling reasons and put that in there, so somebody doesn't come back in the future and say, "Oh, you did it for this person," you say, "No, if you read the resolution clearly, it says, this is the compelling reason, this is what happened, this is what," and that, therefore, unless you have those same compelling reasons, you cannot claim this as a precedent.
Absolutely, and if we, we, what we can add in there is the, the attachment to the deed for liability, all kinds of things that were rectified for this.
So, as far as the, the insurance goes too, sometimes we go through this and we do a temporary CO. So, let's say it's built and he gets a temporary CO, and in a year, Mr. CRC comes back, inspects it again, and makes a report to the village and says, "Okay, after a year, I've looked at it, it's been up, there's been no movement of the wall, no settling, no this," therefore, then you'll get a, a permanent CO. So, that, that's been done in the past too, I'm not sure if the village has done that, but it's been done in other places that way.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
What about a second party doing the inspection, doing the pre, before he does it, and then have another party come back and inspect it instead of having the engineer, because he's gonna say it's fine?
So, you, you set up a criteria that it's not subjective, so you wouldn't have a subjective criteria. So, let's say the wall is at a certain, Mr. CRC would look at it today, and he said, he looks at it and he measures it, and he says, "Okay, I've got this, this point, and it, it's in this location," and somebody could survey it, and you say, "Okay, in a year, does that move?" If it hasn't moved, typically, if it doesn't move in a year, it won't move at all, but.
So, what we could do is have random inspection points for distances between the blocks, height from grade, things like that. So, you set up four or five random inspection points that are inspected now, and inspected at the conditional CO, and then inspected after one thermal cycle, one season or two seasons, and then that becomes a permanent record to verify that the installation is not gonna fail.
Do we also get something in there also that falls down, it can't be reconstructed?
Well, if, if more, uh-
If I may, for a second, if it falls down, it's not leaving my property.
If it falls down, it's gonna roll down the hill and fall into our property.
No, listen, guys, guys, listen, first of all, hold on, let's, let's, hang on a second. Part of a public hearing is that when a comment is made, is made to the chair, it's not people talking to each other because people get into arguments that way. So, please make all the comments to me, and I'll direct them to the people to answer them. Okay, so we don't have arguments.
See, so I left, we left about probably six or eight feet from the wall to the property line. If this was to fall, if, if, I don't even think it would leave the property line it, and if it's still on my property, even if it does fall, it's, I'd leave it.
You could leave it, but then we gotta look at it.
Well, well-
Yeah, exactly.
Hold on, hang on, hang on.
But, as I said, it's not, it's still on my property, so even if it was to fall, it's still on my property, what, take care of my property.
I don't think it'll stay on the wall.
Listen, 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 we're, we'll set up the inspection like George says. David and Stephanie, the attorney, will write up a resolution to be attached to the deed that says if there's a failure, it will be the sole responsibility of Mr. Calabro to, to clean it up, repair it, if it has to be repaired over a certain amount, then you have to come to the village for a new permitting process if it fails, alright? So, there'll be certain criteria to ensure that this wall won't fail, or to verify that it won't fail. And if it does, there will be a, a way to rectify the situation. That will be written in this document that Stephanie and Mr. Garcia will work out, okay? And do you guys agree with that? Can you, can you, alright, George, can you think of some inspection points, distances between the block, or just even take a picture of it? Or we could take it off the drawing, if you could get a, if you can get a drawing, looking at it from Mr. Tompkins' property, and you could number the blocks, you know, across, just assign inspection points, and we could put that in the document to say, inspection point five will be blah, 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 inspection point eight will be blah, whatever. Can you, you think you could take care of that?
Yes, we, we, we can do that, and, and this wall, if it does fail, it's a progressive failure. So, one day, all of a sudden, fall down, the blocks will slowly move, so you'll see it. And we can write that into a resolution where if a block moves more than half inch or an inch, then you gotta, we'll set that criteria, I just use those as numbers. But you said it, say, if it moves more than this, he's gotta come back, rectify, check it out, and do remediation as it happens.
Yeah, well, we'll have to come up with a repair plan or remediation if it hits some trigger points that you guys discuss a certain percentage of gap, like, you know,
Yes.
three eighths of an inch in this amount of time or whatever, alright, can you, do you guys could work on that?
Yes.
Alright, you're not too happy about that, Mr. Garcia?
It's just like, no, no, it's okay, Sean, I'm good, it's just like, I'm fine.
We're just trying to fix a bad situation, because I don't think it's gonna happen if the process was followed, you know?
And I'm with you on that, and I agree, and I think you're doing a good job, Sean.
So, if there's nobody else from the public who would like to talk, does anybody, any board members have any issues or any questions?
Yeah, Sean, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Last time, when we met at fifteen October, I wrote some notes, we talked about the facade which you went over. Did they turn in the verification of the fill material?
Uh, I don't remember if they did, I think it's on the, oh, the, yeah, they were gonna tell us exactly where the fill came from, and Mr. Calabro said that he had the tickets and the receipts, that he was gonna submit them at the end of the project.
Right, we have them from Dakota.
Yeah, so he was gonna give that to us at the end.
Okay, and then we spoke about the disturbance to the side and the front and the landscape plan, that's the only thing I had-
I don't believe we have the landscape plan, I don't think the landscape plan was listed on the drawings. We did tell them to mitigate the front, to stabilize it, and I believe that George said that he, that he did do that. Also, on the drawings from the last meeting, he was supposed to show us what type of fence he was gonna put on the top. And he was gonna show what was remediated in the front.
Yeah, so we were gonna meet out there and go over that from the last meeting.
Yeah, you, you, you guys were supposed to do that, did you all look at it, George?
We didn't look at it together, but I looked at it myself, and Mr. Calabro has not disturbed the area since the last meeting, and he's, and Mr. CRC, we talked to him, I talked to him earlier this week and today, actually, and we talked about how he could show those areas, what he's gonna do, what he plans to do. And then we also talked about, he's in front of zoning, I'm not sure if the zone was corrected, or he got it whatever variance.
Well, we're still working on the zoning.
What, what we had agreed to is so he didn't have to keep sending finished prints, was that when we were all done, and they were all done, and the zoning board, we were gonna have one whole set of prints that showed where the structures were, where everything was, because we didn't want them to have to keep doing prints upon prints upon prints. So, you know, we, we just wanted to know what was gonna be where, and I, I believe you guys, the applicant had requested that we don't continually ask for a ton more prints, is that the way you guys remember it?
Yes.
Alright.
See, Dan added the addition to the site plan, and he'll show some, we talked about adding some grading in the front. And if it's just gonna be graded for now, and leave it that way, and then in six months, a year, or whatever you wanna put walls, then you should say that somewhere, if you're not, if you're doing this part of this, you should let us know, that's, that's where we left off.
Do you guys agree with that? The applicant agree with that?
Yes.
Alright, we, we had said we just, you guys had just wanted to stabilize the property as well as put up a safety fence in the back on that wall, it wasn't gonna be a permanent fence, because you said you only had the plastic on it up top, and you wanted something that would prevent a fall- and you wanted something that would prevent a fall from height. If you remember correctly, it wasn't going to be the, the permanent one, you just wanted to put up something that to keep, uh, people from falling off the property, because it is a pretty high fall, seven and a half feet.
We're, it's not up now, we're getting ready to do plants and...
And just, just remember, whatever, when you have the final one, it has, it should be shown on the drawings. Do we, do we have a, uh, a game plan together? Does everybody understand?
Yes, I will meet with George, George and I actually meant to meet, uh, last week and unfortunately because of our schedules, we weren't able to do it together. But, well, I, I will continue to follow up, I'll follow up with George and we'll get, we'll get this done.
So I, I feel comfortable closing the public hearing. Do any of the other board members or anybody have an issue with leaving the public hearing open or closing it? What, what does the rest of the board wish to do?
Can I jump in for a minute, Stephanie?
You got it.
I think you need to leave it open, actually.
You think so?
I do, because I'm not at all confident that this will get done within the thirty day time period of, of doing a resolution.
Okay, that's a good point, yeah, I forgot about the clock.
Yeah.
All right.
And if it does, then that's great, we can open it and close it right away next month, you know?
Okay, yeah, because we don't want to get on the clock where everybody gets in a crunch.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure, Nick.
Uh, did you just say it's a seven and a half foot, um, uh, fall on the wall?
I believe that's what the drawing shows, seven feet six inches, the maximum.
So is each of the blocks, uh, two foot block, is that what they are?
Twenty-four inch, twenty-four inch, uh, precast, that's correct.
Yeah, so, uh, the building, the, the zoning book says that walls, fences may be built up to six feet tall. Was there permission given to go above the height, that which would only actually have to come from the zoning board giving a variance?
Yes, uh...
Because how do we, how do we go above six feet without a variance from the zoning board?
The testimony of the applicant last month stated he had the building inspector come out when it was at four feet and explained then what he wanted to do, and he said, "Continue." And it would continue with the drawings that were submitted.
I don't think, I don't think the building inspector had the jurisdiction or authority to allow something that exceeded the six foot allowed by code without going to the zoning board for a variance. And as you, as you can see here, if you can see here, maybe not, there are four layers of brick behind, four layers of, of wall, of, uh, stone behind the shed. Uh, Mr. Thompson, I, I guess I met your mother one day and she allowed me to look from the backyard. I was curious to see what it looked like.
It's three and a half blocks high, yes.
Uh, so that would mean that it's over the code allowance and the variance wasn't given, so how did that happen?
It happened by the applicant, the applicant's testimony was that he was granted that permission from the village. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Calibro, I, in reading the minutes, it said that you had, uh, had the building inspector come out at, at the four foot level and that, uh, he had given you permission to do that. Now, without, without building, bringing the building inspector in to testify, I would have to go by what Mr. Calibro had said.
The, oh, it's just the engineering that I permitted. It's, you know, so the engineering I permitted was approved by the building inspector. And when I got that, I invited the building inspector, uh, the engineer, George, came out as well. They had a site, they had a site meeting and they inspected the drainage, the stone I was using and the block at that level, uh, because my concern, there was a problem I wanted to fix then, that afterwards completed.
And Nick, just for clarification, does the, the code say wall or fence?
Both.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it?
No, that's okay, I trust you, I believe you, I, I just didn't, I didn't remember offhand.
Yeah, section two eleven twenty-one, um, uh, it's stated right in the verb, in the, where is it? Uh, I have to find it, but I read it a little while ago. It says fences and walls, uh, may be allowed up to, up to six feet.
I, I believe you, you know, we, we came in towards the tail end of that.
Why?
But these, these drawings, these drawings were approved by the village before we even saw them.
Okay, I just, you know...
I don't know what to, I don't know what to do, what to tell you, you know what I mean?
I understand, I understand, but that's another, you know, it's just part of the complication, I guess.
It is very complicated, you know, so...
We should have written proof.
Okay, well, I'm signing off, I, I wish you all luck with this.
All right, Nick, don't leave yet, uh, I'll talk to you about it later, it's all right.
Yeah, I'll stay, I'll stay on if you like, but I...
No, that's okay, no, we'll talk about it later, we're going to keep the public hearing open. Uh, try and get a little more information and, uh, you know, we'll, we can discuss it next month also. But, but we are starting to run a little long and I think people are starting to, starting to lose their focus. So I'd rather just, uh, go, go over what we're going to do for the next meeting and then request a continuation for the public hearing, okay?
Okay.
Sean, one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, shouldn't I have been notified about this wall going in? When I went to the building inspector, when he started this, he told me that it's not my property, that I got no say. And I can't believe that, I mean...
Well, there, there are a couple, there are a couple of things. Uh, adjacent property owners only required to be noticed if they are requesting a, a special permit, uh, something that requires a site plan, uh, amendment or a zoning change. So like if you were doing work inside of your house, you wouldn't have to notice the people around you. If you were fixing your front wall and it was a permitted repair, you won't have to notice anybody. The only time the adjacent property owners have to be notified under certain conditions. And the building inspector made that determination that it was a permitted use, that it was a permitted modification and therefore it did not require, uh, public hearing or public notice. Public hearing or public notice is usually only required for public hearings. And there is a whole step and reasons to have public hearings and that determination was made where it wasn't required. Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, did I state that correctly?
Absolutely, if he had, if, if the past building inspector had understood or read the code or interpreted the way others are interpreting it, then yes, he would have been sent in for a variance and then you would have been noticed. But since he gave permission as though it was a permitted use, there was no reason to notice anybody as the chairman said. That's the reason you weren't noticed.
And if, if the building inspector had asked the question about a steep slope and the wall height, everything would have stopped and this is the process we would have followed to get to here. That this is what we would have been doing and you would have been noticed before the first shovel got put in there. You know, and the wall wouldn't have gone to seven feet six inches and a thirty percent slope wouldn't have been passed. And, you know, there's a lot of ifs, ands and buts, but we're at the end of it, you know? So that's why we're just trying to fix it.
You don't have anything you can do about it?
No, I, you know, it is what it is now, you know, uh, I don't know what to say, what else I can do, you know, I mean. Because you didn't have nothing in the village laws, I went to a lawyer, he says you can't do anything about it. You know, he says, you know, there's nothing in the, in the bylaws or whatever, he says, so there's nothing you can do about it. So, I don't know, I, I just don't think I'm being treated fairly over this. You know, he's trying to make himself look good and make me look bad, that's what it's coming down to.
Well, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying to fix that for you, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, but it's hard to fix.
I know it's hard, that's why, that, that's why when I'm talking, the, uh, the lawyers are grimacing because of doing, trying to do things that are definitely, that are definitely not a common thing to do because we never, all of our processes are set up to avoid this exact type of situation. And there were breakdowns all along the way and we're just trying to fix them.
Oh, they can't, the whole building's not there.
Based on, based on the discussions I had with representation, we can't ask him to take it down. It's, there's, we're not allowed to do that. Even though we might not have allowed him to build it the way he built it and how he built it, because there are licensed representatives who are willing to certify it, we're not allowed to circumvent their licenses. So it's, it's not, I, I, I feel for you, I, I know that the village let you down and just trying to make it as right for you as we can. And other adjacent property owners, as well as the applicant who tried to do the right thing.
Right.
I know it's, uh, nobody's going to be happy over it, but I, I, I just don't know what else to do. All right?
You'll be both.
Just, just to circle around and recap, uh, Mr. Thompson will send some ideas for, uh, visual, uh, to, for the looks of the place and Mr. Calibro will send some things in that he thinks would be good and will talk about them and I would, if you guys want to talk, you guys could talk. I, I can't prohibit you guys from communicating. But, you know, when feelings get hurt and things become confrontational, it's very difficult to come to an agreement. So I, I, the village would be more than happy to act as the go-between for the aesthetic purposes of the, the face of the wall. George is going to come up with some inspection points for verification and the frequency of verification that the wall has not moved. It will not be less than one year inspections, probably once or one or two times over a twenty-four month period. He's going to come up with that. Uh, Mr. Garcia, as well as Stephanie, are going to come up with some type of caveat to attach to the deed that will be submitted to the village billing department to be attached to the deed as well as to the Westchester County, uh, property records office. All right, is that, you guys, is, do you understand that, Stephanie and, uh, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
No.
All right, so did I miss anything?
I think it sounds pretty comprehensive, Sean, I think it's a, a good starting point.
All right, I appreciate that. So at this time, I'd like to, uh, accept the motion to continue the public hearing for steep slope permit of two twenty-six Travis Avenue.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Uh, to be heard on December seventeen.
I second it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. I appreciate it, Mr. Thompson and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Calibro. We'll talk, we'll, we'll talk about it next month, okay?
That was good, Sean.
All right, Mr. Murray, everybody have a good night.
You too.
All right, Brian.
Although there's nothing left on the agenda, Marcus had called me or sent me an email a couple of days ago saying that, uh, Con Edison wants to talk about doing a project in the transforming yard. Marcus, did, uh, Con Edison wish to come and present the, the, uh, ideas or the, uh, scope of their project before the formal permitting process was started?
Yes, absolutely, they'll be happy to, uh, attend the next meeting, present what they're trying to do and whatever the boy would like to have, um, but definitely we'll get the, hold on a second, have to mute. Yeah, so definitely we'll get that over, I'll get the, um, uh, hopefully Rosemary has those plans as well, get it over to the board. And then if there's any questions before that you want them to present, just let, let Rosemary know, we'll get it over to Con Edison.
All right, so put, we, we put them on the agenda for, uh, for next month. And it's just going to be preliminary submission, are they going to put in an application? Or are they going to just want a, uh, direction from the, uh, from us and the consultants?
As you said, a, a, a pre-submission to see if, if you want to, David, need to do anything official and they're fine with that as well.
Okay. All right, so, and I guess Jen didn't, uh, Jen didn't make it on?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, I, this was basically for Jen and, uh, and...
Did I give them a calendar number?
Uh, no, don't give them a calendar number yet.
Okay.
Because they didn't, they didn't put in an application, they're just, uh, here for a, a brief presentation to determine whether, what process they have to go through. Uh, I briefly reviewed the, the application and to me, it didn't look like it was any, uh, big issue that the building inspector could do it, but George looked at it closer and there, there are a lot of structures that are going to be installed, even though the waste that they're looking to contain is not going to be processed on site. It's basically moats that are going around transformers to contain the oil. And, uh, so the transformers don't have any PCBs in them anymore or filled with mineral oil. However, the belts that are in the older transformers still have PCBs in them because they're not allowed to be drained. So when there's a catastrophic failure, rupture of the, the, uh, band around the transformer, you still have some contaminated oil that comes out. So I believe Con Edison wants to try to rectify that and what, it appears that they're building moats and some other, uh, other devices around the transformers. Is that the way you understand it, George?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, so that was, that was all we wanted to talk about. I, I know, uh, Marcus just sent out something again about the overlay zone. If you guys want to just write something up, uh, he did say that next month, the village board was going to do some things and discuss it, there's going to be another draft resolution for the, uh, the law to amend the law. Uh, it's getting very confusing what they're trying to write. It's almost impossible to follow with the caveats that you're putting on individual properties. But, uh, the main law and the main purpose of the law has stayed the same from the inception. So if you guys read the legislative intent, read my comments as well as David's comments, you can get a, a good idea. And once the village board, uh, okays it and requests input from the zoning and planning board, then we'll put it on the agenda for a discussion and we'll, uh, come up with a draft as to what we like, what we don't like, what we think. Hopefully we can all come to the same idea and same conclusions, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, if nobody has anything else...
Wait, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
George, can I please see her?
Oh, see the baby?
Sorry, but he got, he has a new daughter.
Wow.
Oh, she's beautiful.
Beautiful, George.
There you go.
Sorry, Sean, but thank you.
That's okay.
It's, it's Stephanie passed her bedtime.
And all my kids just went to sleep twenty minutes ago. She came in and waved at me. Oh, congratulations, George.
Beautiful, George, how old is she?
I'm mute, George, you can't hear you, George, take yourself off mute.
Oh, a week?
A week?
A week to the day. Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm glad to see your participation and I know it was a little difficult, hopefully we can work it out, you know?
Yep, good job.
Really good job, Sean.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks a lot.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a great Thanksgiving, bye-bye.
Have fun, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks a lot, see you next month.
Good night.
Bye-bye.